Public move?
Second.
Second, all in favor say aye. Approval October Science Report.
October move?
Public move.
Second.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approve of Main Street. Kayla Friend.
It's a busy season for us right now. Phillip can attest to that. He's helped us through about half of it. Again, many, many thanks to the City Group for all that they do for us. October, of course, we had a wonderful, very successful Brown Bag series every Wednesday behind the museum. And it was probably, well, definitely the most well-attended that we've had every Wednesday. And then Prairie Street Prowl was probably a record setter for us. We had no telling how many children downtown trick-or-treating. And we owe a big, big thanks to the Catfish Festival who helped us buy candy this year. We had over a thousand dollars' worth of candy that we were able to hand out to help our merchants with all the kids and so forth coming through for trick-or-treats. So it was, it was huge and the weather cooperated this year. Main Street Market that the Chamber did, there were over 50 vendors. It was very, very successful. And it was, that was November 12th, it was the past Saturday. And of course, at the same time, we had the opening of the Oak Christmas Tree exhibit. And that's when the town helped so much to put up the trees for us. And we have over, about 12 trees in the museum, 13 trees, that have been decorated by different businesses and organizations. And if you haven't seen it, you really, you need to come in and take a look. It's quite beautiful. Tomorrow night Franklin State Bank will be having another movie downtown. And then the end of November, into the first of December that week, November the 29th, Tuesday night, will be the tree lighting. The Children's Parade will be Thursday night, December the 1st, and ending up behind the Old Post Office Museum where they see Santa. And then the Big Parade and Fireworks will be Friday night, December 2nd. There'll be breakfast with Santa right here in the community center on Saturday, December the 10th at 9:30 in the morning. And another movie at Franklin Bank on Saturday, December the 17th, Elf. So that should be a lot of fun. And I think once again, they're gonna have snow. Children love that. And all of this will culminate, or at least the museum's part of it will culminate two days after Christmas and we'll take down all the trees, get them undecorated because we'll be preparing for a Mardi Gras exhibit from the Roger Reed Foundation of the student scholarship winners. There will be 16 pieces of art from the state student scholarship winners. And we're getting some of the grander costumes from different crews around the state. And we'll introduce Mardi Gras to Winsboro. So that will open on 12th 9th, which is January the 6th. So try to come if you can. We'll, we'll let you know more information as it gets closer. Any questions?
I, I for one would like to thank you for a very, very good report and well detailed. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
If anybody has not seen those trees, y'all need to go look at it.
It's beautiful. Very pretty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I make a motion to accept Main Street report.
Sir, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Let the record reflect that unanimously. My mark.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll be brief and I apologize for not having a written report tonight, but it's been one of those Mondays. Been running around. But basically, we have our two projects. Our water main project is substantially complete. We have one, one little warranty island we got cleaned up here last week, but for the most part, everything's done and that project is just about closed out. We're in a lean-free period now. On our street project, all the asphalt is down. We're, we're complete with that. All we have left is adjusting valves and manholes and striping of the streets that were, that were overlaid. So that, they were waiting on some equipment to come in. That should be in this week, but they're taking the week off, of course, for Thanksgiving. So they'll be back next week. And if they don't finish next week, they'll, they'll finish the first week. We anticipate that will be substantially complete very shortly as well. With that, I believe that closes my report. If y'all have any questions about that or anything else, yes or no?
Hey, I'm picking with you too, sir. That area up there by Walmart on that street, the street that runs Jesse Wright and Walmart?
North Franklin.
North Franklin Street. Why is that there? That, why is that hump deal screwed up right there?
We had, we had an issue following that, that was done in our last year's street project. We had a, an issue that that came up just a few short months afterwards. And we, prior to, prior to starting this project, we actually had Artiman Associates, the geotechnical firm that does all of our, does our work for the streets project, come up here and do some testing on that. Essentially, what it appears is that there was, and without getting too technical, there was an existing sulfate-type material that was, that was in the soils in those locations. And whenever that, whenever that soil sediment mixed with that, it caused the soil sediment to swell. And that's what, that's what's caused the, the expansion of the boat at those three locations along that, three or four locations along that one block of Franklin Street. With, you know, we've taken a look at it and based on the recommendations from our, geotechnical consultant, basically, the only fix for it is to come in there and actually dig out the soil in that area and do a patch, similar to what we do for other, for other areas whenever we're patching bad soil conditions. Now, it's not something that we normally test for. It's not something that's normally seen, that type of situation. Not normally seen in Louisiana. It's fairly common, relatively common in portions of Texas, but it's, it's really, it's really an unusual situation. It's not something that we've ever encountered in Winsboro. We've done, I think, 75% of the streets in Winsboro.
So did that happen right after, before we paid them? Was that, was that song, was that issue foreseen?
It showed up. It wasn't before we paid them. It was showed up, I want to say, three or four months down the road, after, afterwards. But I'd like to emphasize that it's a, it's a prior, based on, based on the geotechnical report, I've got to take their, what they're, what they're providing. It's a, it's a prior existing condition that nobody was aware of. So it's not something that is necessarily the contractor's fault because he couldn't predict it.
Well, what I'm saying is this, if I go into something and I bid on it as a contractor, not known as their, if, like I said, it's a plumbing contractor, and they said, "We got clay pipes," and you didn't know they was there, but still, again, this is what his bid was. Still, is he responsible still for that, even though I didn't know it? I know things could happen, but I didn't foresee that? Would that still fall on that contractor right there, still fixing that?
No, no, sir, because the way the contract is written, he's, we're providing him with information on what the subsurface conditions are. And all the information that he has and the information that we have, you know, we had soil borings done on each one of these streets before they were reconstructed for that prior project, just like we do with every project. Because we want to try and, we want to try and do the best job that we can on those streets. Now, we don't do, you know, we do a small soil boring and that's supposed to be representative of entire streets. But we didn't, we don't test for things like sulfate, because like I said, it's extremely rare. But the contractor bids on what he knows as far as the soils report, and he can't be expected to predict something of that nature.
What I'm saying right now, and I'm saying this to the council right here, we got a tax that's coming up on the renewal on December the 8th. And like I said, when you put in that, say, "Well, what this tax dollars have done," those folks who live in those areas right there say, "Hey, my street still has a black island." After everybody else's street is nice and good, look at what ours got. I think that'll cause us the issue.
Aye.
I think that is something that needs to be addressed ASAP, as soon as possible. It's not fair to those constituents living in that area right there, with those streets like that. I done drove down a couple times, first time, couple of months when a lady told me about it, I didn't know what she was talking about. But I went down that way today, and I'm like, for me going down, that frustrates me, I don't even live down there. But still, that's in my business. But still, again, to have your street, everything else look just as good, but you got this mess right here. I, I think that is something that we need to address because the same, the same, those companies that we're doing business with, remember, this is our own project. So you say, "Well, I'll take care of this," because you give me all this other business. I know we didn't foresee this, but still, again, with all the other business that it's providing us throughout the city that we're still working on. Because they shut us down off something like that, then the companies, they shut up.
I can tell you, we did price it prior to doing this work. It was approximately $22,000 was the cost to repair that, those failed portions of the street. And the contractor, of course, is, and I believe rightfully so, based on the contract, is saying that he's not liable for those costs of the work.
But is he willing to compromise with us, that you say $22,000 to fix it? Is he willing to compromise in with the city? The city said, "We're doing this part, we'll meet each other halfway." Have we talked to them about that?
We, uh, no, sir, we haven't approached him based on, based on those terms.
I think, Mayor, that's something that we probably need to look at on that. Because that need to, that need to be, while we got them in here, I know they're working on those other streets.
This isn't the same.
I mean, I'm sorry, but we need to get, we, we need to get with that, that guy and get that compromise out because that need to be done. We don't need to leave that area up there and say, "Well, we're doing the rest of the city, we'd have moved from that area and left that like that." When you come and say, "Well, we," the constituents will look at it like this. You came in, they ain't gonna know, even understand what you're saying about, you know, the geographical soil, Sabbath stuff, gun street, all that, and they gonna come and say, "You came in, did us a half-tail job." And that's what's gonna, then that's gonna reflect back on us. So I think we need to take care of that, need to take care of. Because it does, it should look the same way across, border across the city, no matter those streets, we done, all of them should look the exact same.
I agree 100%.
I'm, I'm, I'm in full agreement with you on that. I would certainly appreciate any, any assistance that we could get, you know, from the company. But, but even if there is no assistance from the company, and in all fairness, it's, in their bid, that this was, this, this, this one location, you know, was overlooked, under, underbid because not aware, not being aware of that. And I think maybe in the soil sediment testing, that I don't understand it not being caught, but it's caught now. And it's something that we cannot walk away from. We cannot just leave that there and say, "Well, we, we'll get it the next time." If, if there's some way that we can take this and, and we'd have to come back to the council, whether or not that the council would be willing to provide additional funds, you know, to, you know, to, to handle that.
I agree.
And the other question is, would they, is, would the company, because of the, the overlook, you know, of, of that project, would they be willing to, to, to meet us a part of the way? I think that's what you were, that's what you were saying. I would, I, I, I would hope, hope we could, and if we can't, you know, it's, the work, we're gonna have to do it. We're not gonna leave that area, you know, like that.
Can I make a recommendation on that, Mayor?
Most certainly.
And, and we've been through that and I understand exactly what the engineer's saying, and I know Mr. Mulkey has said here, when you run into a situation there that, that you're not aware of, and you have to come back and do something to compensate for what, what it takes to fit it, you, you do a change order. You have to do a change order to that. And that's what you'd do, the contractor. You'd have a change order and the council wouldn't make a resolution, pass a resolution giving, giving you the authority to not exceed $23,000. And you can negotiate with, with the contractor to, if it costs less than that, say if he could do it for 15 and, and you could, we could put up 10, you know, to, to take care of it. But, but we need a resolution for you, for you to be able to expend that money, to spend the money for that project and do a change order on that particular contract. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Am I correct, Bill?
But if they're not, if they're not willing to compromise, we, we still want that repaired. We do not want, want to wait for another cycle.
No.
If at all, if at all possible, we'd like to see some immediate action, you know, taken of that.
That's all for now. See that like that. That's awesome.
But you, but again, what you need to do is pass a resolution, add to the agenda to pass a resolution to authorize, authorize an additional $23,000. What you said, the estimate?
That's off the top of my head, just wrote off 25,000.
$25,000, not to exceed $25,000. That way you can come out of the, the street tax collecting fund to transfer that amount of money, if you need to transfer the whole amount or if you need to transfer a portion of it. But the council needs to give you the authority to do that before you can be, before it can be done.
Okay.
I make a motion to amend the agenda to address the problems on Franklin Street.
Properly moved and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Let the record reflect that unanimously approved.
All right, we're gonna, I make a motion to adopt a resolution, given the mayor authority to issue a change order on the project that included Franklin Street.
Not to exceed 25,000.
On the contract that included Franklin Street.
Is that the only one that we had? You said it was a couple more that was like that.
No, it's, it's, it's three spots within that one block area.
Within that one block.
And you want, you want to put not to exceed $25,000 in that?
25 attached to it. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Let the record reflect that unanimously approved.
No questions?
Thank you.
I make a motion to accept my revised report.
A second.
The proper move and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Let the record reflect that unanimously approved. Security system upgrade.
This is basically the, um, the cameras that's at the city hall. They're kind of fuzzy, kind of blurry, kind of outdated, and we wanted to look into getting some better cameras to be able to monitor the city hall.
I make a motion to, to allow the mayor looking at it, as a, putting in a contractor to look at upgrading those computer system, I mean, camera system at city hall. And we're talking about the ones that outside by the drop box, the ones that's inside by the vault?
And inside.
Okay.
One outside and inside.
Yeah.
A second.
Public move and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Let the record reflect that unanimously approved. Airport managers.
Mayor, Mayor, before you move on. While we at that, like, how the camera system going on in the admin center? We have any problem with the camera system in here?
We hadn't had to look at them so far, so, so I wouldn't, I don't have access to them.
Not to my knowledge. And, and I haven't looked, and no one has mentioned to me that there's been any problems.
So, but we attached with the guy, whoever did, if you look at the same guy who does this system, are y'all looking back at?
Well, it didn't, Chase did the system here. He did the one over there too. And, and, and to be honest with you, I'm not particularly.
We're not pleased with.
I'm not totally satisfied with it.
Kay recommended a system from Sam's that's about 1400 or 1500 dollars. And he came with like maybe 13 cameras, and you just, just laying, could put it on the computer and we could monitor it.
Yeah, our system over there, we, for thousands, fantastic. We could, anyway. We had like 13 cameras posted around, and 1500?
1600.
I mean, you gotta have somebody to set it up, which is gonna be costly, but it would be a lot cheaper than hiring somebody to do it.
So we said, we have never looked at the cameras in here.
We never had a reason to look at them.
I, I, I think.
What did you say?
She said that they have never looked at the cameras, they haven't had a reason. I would rather we know that they are working and we have a reason. And then, like, we had this problem at the school just last week, where we had an incident, ours wasn't working, couldn't get it. So I would rather, you know, hindsight, you know, to go ahead and look at it, make sure these are running, and we have this thing go on. So we got cameras that wasn't, they ain't working. So while we already got, we're gonna go in, they have to check it over.
Right. Really, those are outdated there. We really need some that we can go immediately, you know, to the time, hour, and, and that the camera will use and reflect back to that point. And we can't do that with, with those.
Over there or over here?
Excuse me?
Over there or over here?
Say over there, say over there. We had looked at these years, we know that one.
They did ours.
It's on the mountain.
They, Chase did it. It's probably the same.
Should we have the monitor, so that we can monitor?
I don't have a monitor.
Where is the monitor at these cameras here? What, what do they feed into?
I have no idea. I have no idea.
It's not on my feet when I look at the ones at the city hall, so it should be stationed somewhere.
It was my, it was my understanding that it would be located in this office here.
He didn't put anything in there.
He did not?
No.
I wasn't aware of that.
Well, this security system's not worth anything, they ain't got a monitor.
Good, man.
This is worth anything if you hang out a monitor, but look at it.
I was telling him he was putting one over.
We, we really need, need to look, look at our security system again.
Yeah.
Because this, this, what we have right now is not performing up to the standards that we had, it would.
Well, if you got cameras up here.
If someone happened.
And you don't have some way of, I mean, we have a DVD box and a server and all this stuff. Like a computer screen and a, and we go to the mouse and click on 24 and then once you get it wrong, get what camera you want to see.
Move about, I'm sure.
I know at one time we was trying to set.
Everybody needs a one service, maybe somewhere that.
That's what I thought he did, was tied to police chief office.
That's what they were saying, they said, before it came over, they said at one time, police chief, that he would have access and leave the Martin Prince office and have the monitors in there.
George, do you have?
Why don't we, why don't we do this? Why don't we establish a committee? And Chief, would you object to being a part of that committee? Someone from your department, would you object to being a part of, of the security committee? Okay.
I'm going.
Good. Be honest now. You know, anyone else would like to say one? But that's brilliant, that's enough there.
It sounds like, don't they, we need to get the monitors. We got the camera, but we gotta get the monitors, whether they are feeding here or if we're gonna let them feed to the police chief office. But we said monitors that was coming from there, like, 10,000 dollars, 70,000 dollars, we put in a week. And I said not to have the monitor.
Who's on the other side?
Rick's and George's.
Well, it has to be two thousand.
We need one more council person.
And I want that.
I'm in.
Okay. Okay.
I make a motion for Rick and George and Betty to be on the security committee.
I'd motion really not, not necessarily. I want a committee.
Okay, I'm calling, Mayor. You get that.
But thank you so very much. Public work. Airport manager.
Thank you, Mayor. You and counsel.
Okay.
Hangar rent for the month of October, total of $150. Fuel sales, 933 gallons were sold for a total of $3,689.24. That's, thank you for your time.
Maybe a possibility of ever having a mini show out there.
Suppose we could, if you'd like.
I think that would just be our.
Um, a mini care show.
Cause our airport looks so good. Nail. Need something to get everybody out there to look at it. Watch it. Shake everybody to see that they would be arrested and do something like that.
Don't have to talk into that. I know there are occasional gatherings for the experimental club at the airport, and that gets a lot of traffic. So something like that could be done.
I make a motion to accept airport committee report. Second.
Properly moved and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Let the record reflect that unanimously approved. Public work monthly report.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, our, my would say over with for the year, thankfully. And in, but it is still our busy time of year because we have Christmas decorations that we're getting put up, getting ready for the, all the events, all for this upcoming season. We're working on the decorations, getting close to being finished with them. The tree lighting will be on December the 29th this year. And the, the. And the parade, the kiddie parade will be on December the 1st. And the, the big parade will be on December the 2nd, this Friday night. December 29th. November, did I say December?
Yeah.
November 29th, my, my bad, I, now, I'm changing my book here, so I won't say it. I went by Taco Bell today, they've got their concrete poured, they are putting up sheet rock inside, they're putting the stucco on the outside, and they're coming along real good. I talked to the, the former old job, and they're still expecting to be ready to go by December the 12th. And, and Fila, what used to be Boogaloo's, they are now accepting job applications for, for their expected opening. I'm not sure exactly when their expected opening is, but they are accepting job applications there through Big John's. So if anybody knows anybody needs something for them, that'd be the place. Miss Teeth stole my thunder. What we talking about on the streets a while ago? Uh, we, uh, they, they, everything is looking real good on the streets. They've done all the dirt work and everything, all this caught up, and we're doing real good on that, just waiting for them to come in and finish up. That's all I have.
How are y'all coming on?
I'm sorry, I had it quoted before. The theater, I understand that they were using the theater for some public event. That's what came to me.
That's what came to me the other day.
Because that, that should be off limits altogether.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't know they was using it until it was a done deal.
Right.
I, I, I don't, I don't know if they was using the whole thing or if they were just using the front of it or whatever, I don't know.
I, I think that the whole thing should be off limits.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Right.
I agree.
Are you talking about the prince, is that the prince's room?
No, it's the Princess Theater. The prince's room is fine with the theater itself.
The prince theater that was being used also, is that correct?
That's what I was, yeah. What I, I got.
Being used for what?
I don't know. I don't even have a clue what they was being used for.
They were, they were cooking in the foyer, cooking for the dinner theater that was next door.
Okay, okay. I did not know that. I talked with Mr. Heath today about the theater, the, the structural engineers, and they're still waiting on the last of their reports. Or have you got anything since I talked to you?
Do you mind if I just?
Sure.
I do apologize. I was hoping to have our final, final report from our new Princess Theater ready for tonight, but there's, I know the most important question is, is how much it's gonna cost, and that's the one I don't have an answer to. So I'm waiting on a couple of numbers. We have requested a contractor review. So, uh, I'm waiting on a couple of numbers, we, we have requested a, a contract to review, uh, to review the cost proposal, and, and so I'm waiting on, waiting on that information, but, uh, I, I do intend to have something, uh, ready this week, uh, prior to Thanksgiving, to, to deliver to the city as far as our, our preliminary findings. Basically, uh, there, there are major, uh, structural issues throughout the roof and, and the Princess Theater, uh, that, that, that will have to be addressed prior to allowing occupancy again. Uh, but that's, that's the Cliff Notes version, and I'd like to apologize, I wanted to have tonight, but we just weren't able to do that, I will thank you something this week.
Thank you.
Uh, did you have a question, Mr. Chick?
Yeah, I forgot what, uh, water leaks. Y'all getting along with getting on those, man?
We're working on them, it's about as fast as we can get them, coming in, uh, the head, uh, main bus ruptured this, uh, Sunday over there by, uh, the Westborough Bank that they had to work on. Uh, but, uh, other leaks, we're working on them, about as fast as we can get to them.
Is it, I mean, is it, for lack of a better word, is there nothing in water? Doesn't it seem like we're having a lot of water leaks?
When, when, when it, when it, you always have a lot of water leaks when it gets, when it turns cold or when it gets extremely hot. Uh, when it gets hot and dry like it is now, that ground has a tendency to shift and, and, and crack, and when it does, it, it, it puts pressure on the, on the lines and causes them to rupture. Then when it turns cold and, and gets wet, you have everything go back the other way and it puts pressure on it again. So, like I said, it, when it gets real hot, or, or, and, and it, the transition from, from being real hot to cold and then being real cold, that, that's your worst part, parts of the year is when it's like that.
That makes sense, I just, you know, I've done a lot of water.
Yeah, exactly, contraction and expansion, yeah.
That's all it is, and it's, it's nothing uncommon.
No. Uh, in some, some, some years, we, it, it, we have more than others. Here again, like, like I said, it depends, like, right now, we're in this real dry period, and that, that's caused that, that ground to, to dry up and, and, and crack. And like I said, when it does, and it puts pressure on them pipes, and then, then like I said, it's beginning to turn cold, it's been at twenty-eight this morning, twenty-nine, and it, that makes everything kind of go back the other way, you know, so, yeah.
And this, I mean, the, there are a lot involved in fixing those water leaks.
Yes, ma'am, it is.
It's not just, uh, drive out there, let's dig a hole, you can't do that.
No, ma'am. Uh, see, if, if, if it's not a, 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 a bad leak, like a ruptured main or something like that, and even, if it, if it is a ruptured main, we had to do a line location. We had to call in, if it's a ruptured main, we could call in an emergency line location. And before we, and we had to do that before we dig. If it's not an emergency, then we had to call in a line location, and we had, then we had to wait seventy-two hours before we can do anything. And, uh, according to the rules and regulations, we can't put anything past a proppant rod in the ground without a line location. If we put up a street sign at the corner of, by your house, we got to do a line location and wait seventy-two hours before we can do that. Even though we know that there's no lines or anything at that corner by your house, or by Rex's house, or the mayor's, whoever it may be, but we still had to do that line location.
And there was probably a pole, a left, uh, side there at one time that you're just replacing.
Yeah, right, right. E- even, even if we're replacing one, I, I remember instance, we replaced one, uh, upon, uh, Carter Street back when Ellis was here, and they drove the post down, before they got all the way down, they run into, hit a, hit a water line. So, and things, things like that, so then, then we had to stop, pull the pole back up, repair the water line, and then move the post over and, and re-put. But like, they've changed the, the laws and specifications on that so much now that, like I said, we can't do anything other than a proppant rod in the ground, we can't even dig up the surface line, or not supposed to unless we have a line location.
And this is, and I guess the reason I'm bringing this up is, you know, that's one reason why we've had to do this increases because we have things like this happen, and we have a lot of them.
Right.
And that's not cheap to do that.
No, the, the clamps and all that we, we buy are, and, and we kind of buy the, the better ones because we found that they last longer than the old, than the other kind, and there's, most of those are stainless, and they're, they're not cheap, but, but they will hold up.
Right. I make a motion we accept the public report.
Properly moved.
Second.
And second, all in favor, say aye. Oppose? Let the record reflect that unanimously approved. Uh, code enforcement officer, Mother, report. Do you have something on that?
No, sir, I do not have anything on that, uh, I have, uh, gotten anything from Fayon on that.
Okay. Uh... Park chief, Mother, report.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Month of October, we had two private dwelling fires in town, one out of town, make the total thirty for the year. We had one vehicle fire here in town. Uh, two grass brush and rubbish fires in city limits, two out of city limits. One call at the hospital. At one fire alarm, which would be the hospital as well. And we installed seven smoke detectors. That bring, well, that makes fourteen calls for the city. Actually, seven calls, excuse me, the, the smoke detectors, well, count. Seven calls, uh, for the city, three out of town, ten for the month. That brings a total for the month, ten, like I said, and a hundred and twenty-eight for the year. All the equipment's been kept checked, uh, the training's still going on, just had a certification test, um, last Thursday, gonna have one December eighth as well. Been a little busy with this drought, burn ban on everybody who want to burn, but everything's going good. That's the end of my report, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
I move that we accept the fire marshal's report.
Public move and second, all in favor, say aye. Oppose? Let the record reflect that is unanimously approved. Police chief, Mother, report.
He also wants to, um, ask to amend the agenda to add a new dispatcher. Uh, we originally hired three, and then one of them is no more, got here to change it. So that'll need to be added onto here.
May I make a motion to amend the agenda to add, uh, a hiring of a dispatcher of the police department to the old agenda?
Properly moved.
That's second.
And second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Did we need to amend the agenda for that?
Yeah, it wasn't on there. You had that higher.
Like they just, because to add this to the board.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, Council. Uh... From the, from ten seventeen, from eleven twenty sixteen, on a criminal charge, we had thirty-eight, for the year we got four hundred and thirty. On that traffic charge, we had ninety-six for the month. For the year, six hundred and seventy-six traffic charges for the year. Highway accidents was eighteen for the month, probable loss was sixteen for the year, on them was thirty-four. And the cost for the year, six hundred and thirty-four. Also, on the dispatcher, uh, I'd like to, uh, ask the council to, to hire, uh, Taylor Stevens for the third dispatcher, Taylor Stevens.
Haley Stevens?
Taylor.
Taylor.
Taylor. Stevens. Does she have any part, experience?
Yes.
Well, I'm going to, uh, second.
Oh, properly moved and second, all in favor, say aye. Oppose?
Move everywhere.
I'll take it.
Let, let the record reflect that is unanimously approved by the council. Chief, was that your, was that your report?
Yes, that's it.
I make a motion that we accept it, uh, police chief, Mother, report.
Properly moved.
That is second.
And second. Okay.
The, uh, the vehicle, how's the, uh, the vehicles?
Uh, we, uh, we're still waiting on the vehicle at the town. If they haven't come here, but the vehicle for USDA, we picked it up last Thursday. So right now, it's a morgue, getting striped now, and then after getting striped, we'll take the other disease, get it ready, go put the stuff in. But, uh, surely play that in Bayou City, probably another two or three weeks, and have the other leave.
I make a motion to accept the police chief, Mother, report.
Public moved.
Second.
And second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Let the record reflect that unanimously approved. You made Mother's report.
Thank you, Mayor.
You made officer's mother report.
Uh, number of dogs, adopted for the month, one seventeen for the year. Uh, false, five fifty-three for the year. Only cat, that's probably zeros to the four. Uh, two died, ten for the year. Uh, four picked up, hundred and twenty-five for the year. Uh, total number of care for us, twenty-seven. Four hundred and fifty pounds of dollars, forty-six thousand, three hundred for the year. Uh, total number of dog, P N nineteen, one cat. Total animals, twenty-one. Misalinas, ten. One of the misalinas was a, uh, rabbit that got caught in a trap with misalinas last Monday, someone's gonna come and adopt him tomorrow.
What type of trap was that?
One of our dog, uh, cat traps, uh, a rep got in it.
Okay.
Yeah.
With the cat?
No, just, just a rep. So someone's gonna come and adopt, I think somebody, cat must got lost or something, we don't have it by the week or something. Uh, total number of cars, eight oh one. Total dead animals is, uh, eleven. Forty thirty for the year. Also, on our, you know, animal shelter, we bit reds, been asked about, uh, we had got the top put in, uh, they gonna come in, maybe just waste some time, put the size down, four feet, they're not gonna be shedding. Uh, also, uh, I think that we'll be putting our cages in, they went by our dog houses for each cage, we be putting in. Uh, also, on our beautiful cages, y'all had, y'all had seen it, y'all go out there and look at the entrance of the dog, kinda look, look really nice. Put our cartoon cats and everything, put on. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you, Russell.
Make a motion to accept the mother's report.
Properly moved.
Second.
And second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Let the record reflect that is unanimously approved. Economic development report.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, I'm gonna bring you up to date on Franklin Rubber Recycling, uh, the old one's for rubber recycling facilities. Uh, getting all the information, get lien free certificates from the state and the local governments to make sure that everything is clear on that. So the transfer of the ownership of the equipment and the operation of the business will go to Franklin Rubber Recycling. Uh, and, uh, and, and it's, it's moving forward, uh, real well. They, presently, they are employing sixteen people, and, uh, they're taking in, in, uh, the old tires, recycled tires, uh, to be processed. So, uh, everything is moving forward with that. Uh, next thing is that, uh, the farmer's market, uh, the contract, the contract has been approved by the state, certificate to, for it to be released, to let the contract, uh, and, and exactly what date, uh, they gonna start on construction. I, I, I asked that today, and they, they have not given us a report on it, but it will be in the very near future, and-
I would love to know the day they, they start, that they're gonna start, and I think we all ought to go out there- Yes. And let Jack dig a hole to say, we started.
Now, we, we will-
Good idea.
We will, we will-
Good, good idea. I like that.
Groundbreaking, uh, on that, it's been a long time-
It has, and I would love it, yeah, man.
But, uh, we excited about that and, uh, everything that's moving forward with that. And other than that, Mayor, that's, uh, that's, that's all I have. I, I would like to say, and not from just the economic development report, but as a concern system. And we've talked about the streets, uh, the renewal tax, it is a renewal tax. Uh, the absence sales tax is very important to the city, and we need to make sure that we get out there and support that. Uh, and, uh, focus so we can continue to improve the infrastructure of our community.
That's a good point, Billy, and I'd just like to bow down and, and, uh, request, uh, some support in this, in this area from our local paper. Uh... That tax has did so much good. If we can go back to the, to the time before, uh, we had that tax and look at the condition of the streets here, and then compare that with now, there's actually no comparison. Uh, if, we, we have streets right now, except it is a small percentage of the city that I would put up against any, any street, royal or industrialized. So I, I, uh, I, 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 I request, you know, I request Franklin's support on this issue. Thank you.
I make a motion to accept the mother's report.
Properly moved.
Second.
And second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Let the record reflect that unanimously approved. Community center, Mother, report.
Good evening, uh, we had four events, um, for the month of October. Uh, prepaid one city for a total of a thousand fifty dollars for, um, the community centers this month. I, um, also like to, um, to mention that we are working with, um, the people at the Princess Theater, so whenever they can, uh, we, we have openings and they need to have, um, these community center for events, we're trying to make sure that we have, uh, clear dates, they're calling about clear dates that they can use instead of having to use the smaller Princess Room, uh, for some of their events. And I believe on the tenth, right after the chamber gets done with their event, they'll be here for, um, I think it's the Opry, if I'm not mistaken. They'll have the, uh, the Opry, uh, here, uh, on the tenth, uh, that evening, I believe it starts at seven. And also, uh, want to invite you all out tomorrow for that one, no one go hungry. I think that's in conjunction with the mayor's office and with the chief of police. I think we got everything, um, together and got somebody to fry turkeys and cook our ham, so, uh, I think we're ready to roll on that, we got our everything, uh, ready to go, so we'll start tomorrow at twelve. So if you'd like to come, eleven, eleven? Okay, eleven tomorrow, so we'll be, uh, feeding, uh, and if you wanna come out and join us, we'll greatly appreciate it. If you'd like to come and help serve, that'd be, uh, welcome as well.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, and I, and I'd just like to echo that, that, that you are all invited, uh, to have lunch with tomorrow.
I move that we accept the community center's monthly report.
Sure.
All properly moved and second, all in favor, say aye. Oppose? Let the record reflect that is unanimously approved. Uh, we don't have a athletic officer's report right now because we don't have an athletic officer, you know, uh, to, at, at this point. Uh, it is, it's a big position right now.
Oh, we don't have? We don't have the athletic director that was-
No, I, uh, we don't have one. I couldn't justify, uh, the, the, the level of, of, uh, production with what we, uh, had, had originally expected, so we, uh, that's a temporary position. And it's, it's, it is right at this point in time, you know, open.
So...
Uh, Mother?
Wait, 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 just a minute, I, I'm gonna remind you. So... Do we do away with the position of recreation director? Or we just not gonna have one in the winter? Or did, is it the, the guy, we just need it in person?
In person. Uh... The, the position is still, uh, there. Uh, and, um, what, 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 what we need, and, and, and I thought, I thought that we had an outstanding, uh, individual servant in that position. Uh, but it's real, it's real difficult to put in the necessary time in that position when you, when you have a full-time, uh, job, you know, to do during the day. And it's, it's, it was too, too, too- And it's it's it was too 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 really too much, we were actually too much of him during our working day. And 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 he has a job, you know, so that position is temporarily. Empty.
So we're going to have to ask for the position?
Very possible, yes, I think probably that's the best way to go. Item number. Number seventeen, monthly financial report.
Did you find was the miscellaneous sixty-two thousand?
I did, it was actually payroll reimbursement from general fund to utility fund for, you know, when we were doing the transfer within utility fund to so on. And that happened to be the one where there was no taxes taken out, anyone checks and it was a big monthly one. And so it was two reimbursement checks on one deposit slip for sixty-two thousand. So reimbursement.
So we will unsettle the matter, there we are, I think. I make a motion to accept the monthly.
That is properly moved and second, all in favor say aye, opposed, let the record reflect that unanimously approved.
Okay. So we got to do a motion on the water bills. We need to amend the agenda.
Excuse me.
You have to amend the water bills, accounts that we talked about.
So we take a moment.
I make a motion to amend the agenda to discuss water bills.
Properly moved.
Second.
And second, all in favor say aye, opposed, let the record reflect that unanimously approved. You want you want to go ahead and?
No, I think Rex has a motion.
Yeah. Make a motion, I got a motion, make a motion to to add those adjustments, what we did, what we plan to do to fix those counts in the on those water bills.
Properly moved.
Second.
And second, all in favor say aye, opposed. Motion. Properly moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor, opposed.